Order please. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on roll call, Mr. Ayer.
Here.
Mr. Bartlett.
Here.
Mr. Brownite.
Here.
Dr. Lu- Dr. Lewis, we're glad to see you. Thank you.
Well, I've been to friends who have a granddaughter.
Very good, very good. No excuses needed.
And so that was important.
Mr. Vanstone.
Here.
Uh, Mr. York.
Here.
All right. Everybody has seen the minutes from the August the 11th meeting. Any questions regarding those minutes? No?
No, I just have a question.
No question.
On the last, last, last paragraph.
Okay.
It says, uh, it was asked that a fiscal officer rank and send out updated budget for the permanent improvement fund on what has been spent. I did send out an email and I asked that to be added to the next council meeting.
Right.
So, I guess I'm wanting to confirm that everyone's still okay with that and you can get us that information.
I can get it to you this week.
Okay.
So, we'll have it on the agenda next week.
Uh, on the eighth.
Two weeks.
Well, I meant two weeks, yes. All right, uh, no other changes, a motion and a second to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mr. Brownite.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Vanstone.
Aye.
And Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, in communications, we have a kind of a light communications tonight. We just have Mr. Holloway's court. Uh, Rod, would you like to commentary comments about, uh, the building department, building permits?
Uh, it was a good month for revenue and number of permits last month.
Thank you, Rod.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Hey, Rod, so, what, can you tell us what the status is of putting out the bid, the walk around Dogwood Park, the trail?
Yeah, um, do you want to get into that now, or?
At some point, at some point, it doesn't have to be now, but at some point tonight, I would love to get an update on what that is.
Yeah, I think we can kind of work around to that.
As long as he doesn't sneak out when he's when he gets.
No, he's not going to sneak out.
But I do have a permanent pencil that I'm going to fix today.
Next time, try and keep your remarks a little bit, uh, brief. All right, um, looks like we have a good crowd in here tonight. Um, I'm sure everybody's eager to get up and say something. So, since we do have such a nice crowd in here, and I'm obviously very pleased to see you all, of course, um, we are going to limit your time fairly strictly to three minutes. When you get to the podium, if you'll state your name, your address, so on and so forth, you can say whatever you would like, unless it's criticism of the mayor. Um, other than that, you're free to go. Who wants to go first?
Mayor, if I may, we have a presentation.
Oh, we have a presentation, yes.
And I know that, I know that some of them have commitments later, so I wanted to do that.
Thank you, yeah, for reminding me. Very good.
Um, I'm going to introduce, uh, Amanda Barnett. Um, there's Alicia, Anna, Maggie Kenner, and Becca's here. So, uh, these, they are with the, come on up, come on up. They are with the preschool parents group.
Group.
Um, and I will tell you, I want to publicly acknowledge them and everything they do. Um, we have a check presentation today, and that only represents a little bit of what they do. Um, the check we have today is specifically for the drinking fountain that's up at, that they just put up, and I'm so delighted you're able to get, be able to realize some of your, uh, fruit, fruits of your labors and what you've done.
Come on around, Drew.
So, go ahead. So, uh, the other thing, I looked at this and with the contributions that you guys have done to the pool, uh, and the contributions that I want to thank you all, just to back up, this group has been involved from the very beginning with the planning of the tot lot, and you guys have been stewards since 1985. So, they've done surveys, they've surveyed your people, they've got age-based equipment that they use, so if you, if you go all in on what you guys have done in the last couple of years, that number would be closer to 25,000 dollars. So, thank you.
Fantastic job. We're getting the middle of this. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't feel like I was going to overreact, no. One more. One more. That's all. All right. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody in the dressing room needs more than one.
Alicia. I will text you, I'm so sorry. I think it was something, uh, sounding weird, psychotic thing that was, so I saw you at, I saw you at, so I will text you in a little bit, we'll catch you.
Imagine that.
Yay. I'm just.
All right, as I was about to say before that fabulous presentation, that, that group is just fantastic, they really are. They do so much for us.
Oh, and a shout out to Ben James, who hooked it up and did all that, and it's, it's working. There's a bottle filler and a little thing for your pet, it's really cool.
It's great, it's great. All right, permission to address council, as I started to say, because there is sort of a large group here, we are going to, we're going to, you know, be a little strict on the three minutes, you know, please state your name, your address, so on and so forth. Um, our official timer is right here. Who would like to go first? Jennifer?
Hello, my name's Jennifer Dagerberg. I'm a, I live at 3855 Oak Street. Um, I am a thirty-six year resident of Merrimott, a fifteen year business owner, and a thirteen year resident of the historic Old Village, one of the Charles Short Houses, right across the street from the church. The Merrimott Chapel, built up on the Dale Park Hill, is the first and oldest building in the village. This crown jewel was designed by Louis E. Gallard to resemble an English Norman parish church and to be the focal point of the village center, now the old town square in the Merrimott Historic District. The placement of the chapel was a core element of John Nolan's overall plan for the community, which now holds status on the National Register of Historic Places. I have recently become aware that the decades-long relationship between the Merrimott Community Church and the Thomas J. Emory Memorial Foundation, who owns the chapel, the pioneer graveyard, and the land on which they sit, has come to an end. In this relationship, the church was responsible for the daily operations and care of the chapel and its grounds. The church also handled the scheduling and custodial work of weddings and funerals. Any major capital improvements and major maintenance issues, for example, a new roof, cemetery wall repair, et cetera, have been paid for by the Emory Foundation and/or the Merrimott Preservation Foundation. It has come to my attention that the Cincinnati Waldorf School, located across the municipal parking lot on Chestnut Street, has entered into an agreement with the Emory Foundation to manage and use the chapel. This information is of great concern to me, and that brings me to council tonight. In the twelve years since the Cincinnati Waldorf School purchased the Dale Park School on Chestnut, they have demonstrated neglect of their property, a disrespect of the parks and grounds throughout the village, and a negligence towards participatory and contributory management, maintenance, and upkeep. Examples: unkept school frontage and surround, lack of maintenance of grass and leaf removal, overuse of the ball fields and the sledding hill, erosion towards the creek, overgrown garden in Ann Button Becker Park, daily use of the municipal parking lot, and overuse of Dogwood Park and the tot lot. I cannot feel confident that allowing the Waldorf School to become the custodian of Merrimott's crown jewel, the chapel, without very specific contractual guidelines and checkpoints, as it is in the best interest of the chapel and the village and its residents. Village Council, you are our elected officials. Tonight, I ask you to share the details of this arrangement and assure us, the residents and taxpayers of the village, that the integrity, historic preservation, and proper building and grounds maintenance of this key Merrimott landmark will be monitored and ensure that oversight of maintenance and care standards will be managed by the village and our chapel will not be jeopardized by this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you want to copy that?
I have.
Oh, you have?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
What is our jurisdiction of the chapel?
Well, it's, it's private property. Go ahead then. Well, it's, it's private property, I mean, it, you know, it's, it's owned by the Thomas J. Emory Memorial, it's not our property. So, the arrangement that, that is, well, we don't even know whether the arrangement's going to take place or not, but let's say that it was going to, that would be between two private parties. I mean, the village does not have.
They don't have any.
Any say.
We can monitor to make sure they continue to meet the ARB.
Well, that, that we can do, of course, I mean.
Maintain it.
Yeah, if they maintain it, then that they.
But we can't maintain a relationship.
Yeah, I mean, the village can in no way, you know, intercede or interfere with the conversation that may be happening between the two parties, that kind of a thing.
And, and the problem is, very honestly, uh, we can only oversee it to the extent that they're complying with our own laws and ordinances, you know, and I've heard rumors late, not rumors, but rumblings over the years, that the Waldorf School hasn't lived up what we'd like them to do, but it's my understanding that every time we, we kind of pinch them a little bit, they step up and do what they're supposed to do for a while. So, I'm thinking to myself, council or the mayor especially, just going to have to really keep a close eye on what they're doing there to make sure that it does stay up, because I don't think legally there's much we can do about it, you know, other than make them comply with the laws and ordinances.
You've got to come up.
You should.
So, perhaps the council and Merrimott Preservation.
Name, name.
Might be willing to offer to Emory Foundation to assist with, do you want to agree?
Eileen, if you would have stated your name, please.
Eileen Beatty, sixty-seven fifty-seven, right, lifetime resident, twenty-year resident, owner of a fun house in the Historic District.
All right.
Fun house.
I just want to comment that, like, council was in no way privy to these discussions. I mean, this was a private conversation between the Emory Foundation, Merrimott Preservation Foundation, and the Waldorf School. There is a meeting this Thursday at Merrimott Preservation Society, which I think is pretty much a public meeting, so anybody can come, we could even maybe move it here, that is going to go through all the steps that got us to this point. And I don't really want to comment further on those steps, because I have anecdotally what I've heard, but I don't know that it's true, so I won't elaborate. But I do think it would be appropriate for MPF and the village to set guidelines and expectations for how this property should be managed, and I would wholeheartedly advocate for that. So.
We're walking a fine line here.
Yeah, I mean, that's, in, in theory, or whatever, that, that's, that's, that's a very nice thought, it's a reasonable thought, but we cannot place an unreasonable expectation on maintenance on someone that we would not place on any other resident in the village. So, I mean, yes, we will, we, we do know what goes on occasionally. I, uh, in my ten years of practically being in service here, I've had multiple conversations with the various administrations at Waldorf with varying degrees of success, you know, talking about keeping up maintenance, so on and so forth. So, you know, they listen, they are responsive in that regard, and that, that will continue.
Well, and I, I think the appropriate, you know, course of action would be to have a sit-down and discussion, you know, with parties who are interested, somebody who represents MPF, somebody who represents the village, somebody who represents the Emory Foundation, somebody who represents the Waldorf School, and, you know, this, in my mind, would be a meeting of the minds to come up with the win-win for this arrangement.
The one other thing that it seems to be appropriate to have our zoning officer meet with them.
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have included you.
And particularly talk about what our ordinances say, not a step beyond, just here's what our ordinances say about use and other things. So, it's, it's, it's set the, because I think that's the most, it's a slippery slope here. You know, it's, it's, you own a business, you know, if somebody came in and said, you have to do this, this, and this, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's a tough situation, and so, but I think making sure they understand the uses of the building, and et cetera, et cetera, and what it's legally obligated would be valuable.
But I can just follow up, and I appreciate what you say about, like, when we've gone to talk to them in the past, they've been responsive. Why don't you?
Yeah, if you, so, so everybody can hear.
I think the responses have been lip service, because I can tell you that they do not cut their grass on a timely basis, it can go weeks without being cut. They did a cleanup in the past month, because I think they might have had a job interview with the Emory Foundation, so the front of the school is looking fantastic, but that's about the only thing that's looking fantastic. And as for holding them accountable, I, I understand the separation of church and state, so to speak, and that we can't, if it's an, if it's an agreement between the Emory Foundation and the Waldorf School, that's hard to become part of that conversation. However, I do believe that we, we have not done our job as a village to make sure that they are maintaining our property that they use on a daily basis. I live over there, I see it every day, it is atrocious. The garden and the park is growing through the fence, um, I don't even know why you would want your child to go into it, it's probably full of bee nests and things like that. Um, today, we, I was watching the traffic pattern go by, and somebody was anxious to get past, and Marty is my witness, pulled right, he pulled right up into Ms. Schomburg's park to get around the car.
What?
Into the park, up on the curb, two, two full wheels to get around, because the traffic is so bad there. I mean, it is, it's really a disgrace, to be honest. It's a disgrace, I really, I mean, this has nothing to do with the philosophy of the Waldorf School and how they teach, anything like that. It's the way they take advantage of the property that the village owns, they do not own, and they are not respectfully participating in the maintenance of it. I know on the agenda today is the discussion of the parking lot. That parking lot really is to service, it's a municipal parking lot, it is to service all of the residents of the Old Village, as we know, the garages do not accommodate cars, most families now are two-car owning families, there's nowhere for them to park. And then, and yet, we're allowing the Waldorf staff to use the parking lot on a daily basis. That just doesn't seem right. So, I do agree, and yet, I want to disagree, that there isn't anything that we can do as a village to try and make this a better situation. Thanks.
Oh, great, thank you, thank you.
Can I follow up on, please elaborate on one comment?
Uh, kind of, yeah, quickly, quickly, because I want to give everybody an opportunity.
I have to add that, that they have been repeatedly, gently asked to not let their employees park along the street in front of the residents' townhomes, and they have refused.
Louise?
Yes, please. I'm sorry. Louise Schomper, 3885 Oak Street. Um, I have been around there since Waldorf moved in, and, um, I agree with everything Jennifer has said as far as the maintenance of the, of the building and, and taking care of the outside of the building, and letting plants grow, and, and not weeding anything or taking care of it, of, um, really destroying some areas of, of the area where they aren't even supposed to be. Like, for instance, the side of the, uh, on, on, where the cemetery is, um, on, on the school side, there's absolutely nothing but mud there, and broken branches, and, uh, just junk all over the place. And the same thing for a portion of the curve around toward Worcester Pike, and down by the creek is just, um, a jumble. They're going into the creek, um, I was working down near the, the, uh, uh, near the street where the creek grows, goes underneath, and their children are going in to the water and into that culvert. And I know from talking to maintenance department people, that when the sewer gets backed up, they don't send one person to do it. They send at least two and sometimes an extra one, so that if the person is going down into the sewer line, can't get back up very easily, they've got help. And I explained, there was a teacher standing there, um, I went down and talked to her and said, you know, that's not a very good place for your children to go, it's very dangerous if you go too far, there's a, a slippery metal slide that goes down from the level of the creek down to where the, uh, the bottom of, of the, of the lagoon is, over where the sewer line goes in. And so, the water goes down there, it's slippery, if they go down off of there, it's going to be hard to get them out. And, uh, sometimes I, I have seen children down in there, and there's no adult around, and I have gone around different places in playground areas and to try to find somebody, and the one time, I couldn't find anybody. There was a little, little girl that was down in that creek right there. And so, I think the appearance is, is bad in some areas where they go and where they are playing.
Time's up.
But I think they are, uh, not following, uh, very good discipline as far as places that weren't given to them.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thanks, Louise.
Thanks, Louise.
I have one thing, um, that I'm related to the chapel or the school, are we done with that? I don't want to.
Any, any other comments about the school? Brad?
Hi, council, Brad Lockhart, 3875 Oak Street, been a resident for over twenty-eight years, nine of those years in Old Town Village. My question is, why can, why can't the village council be a steward of the residents for this situation?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Let me, let me, let me be more specific.
Okay.
Why can't, you, you mentioned the council cannot be involved, because it's the Emory Foundation and Waldorf School, but isn't it your due diligence to know and understand what's going on between those communications?
Well, no, not entirely, I'm, it's kind of private property, I mean, in, I, I think I understand what you're asking, but I mean, the precedent that might be setting there, the village meddling in any type of a business transaction, you know, in the village, I mean, nobody would really want that.
Property standards, and of course, all the ARB.
That, yeah, that we will be monitoring.
But, yeah, I understand that, but also the grounds that are around the oldest piece of real estate in the, in the village is right there, the grounds are owned, majority of those grounds are owned by the village.
Correct, yes, correct.
So, isn't it in your best interest to make sure you know what guidelines are going to be set forth between what could be a property manager and an owner?
All we can do, Brad, is hold them to the ARB, the rules that are laid out in our code, just like Ed said.
Correct.
We have code, we have very clear, you know, we apply those to all of the buildings in the Historic District, right, like your house.
Sure.
So, it's, it's, we can't, to Bill's point, you can't treat one group differently than the other in that sense, and then say, I'm going to hold you to this barb, I'm going to hold everybody else to this other barb. So, it needs to be equal across all those different entities, individuals, and it's all, it is private property.
But as I said, I mean, there's no reason we can't have a civilized discussion among the interested parties and try to come up with some agreement and discussion about the concerns that you have. And, you know, I, I mean, I think that's, that, I do think that's on us, you know, and I, and as I mentioned, I think that's, you know, M, somebody from MPF, Rod, um, somebody from Emory, somebody from Waldorf School, you know, should have a sit-down and discuss that.
Who would be responsible for arranging that?
Well.
It sounds like, it sounds like MPF though.
Well, it's, it's just not our lane.
No, it's not, we can't.
It's not the council's lane, however, I think the point I hear Brad making is, maybe we could facilitate a meeting or something like that.
So, this is what I can say in confidence, is that, you know, there's going to be a discussion about how this all played out, because there's been a lot of rumors flying around the village, and like I said, I.
It's my understanding it's still playing out.
But what I can say at the MPF meeting, as a member of council and a member, you know, whatever trustee of MPF, is that, you know, that these are these concerns that we have been presented, you know, I, I have some of them in writing, you know, if you want to send them to me, and my personal email, I just will, you know, just say, hey, here's, just so you know, this is on the thing. I, I don't want to take the stance that hands up, there's nothing we can do, but we have to work within the statutes and the ordinances that we have in place.
I totally respect that, but I get the feel, that's what you're saying, whoa, we can't do anything.
Well, that's not what I'm saying.
Oh, I, I, but, but that's the vibe I feel. And I understand.
That's exactly right, we can't do.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I, I think, to Bob's point, I think you have Rod sit down with him and share with him, here's what's in the code, let's make sure that we all have the expectation, you have to meet this criteria, you know, so as a zoning officer, because he's the one who checks those kind of things out, I think to Bob's point, that would be a good conversation to have, but going beyond, I mean, helping him understand, here's what the laws are, you got to stay, things have to be maintained at this level.
Sure.
By law.
Let me, I know, I know I'm finished, let me finish, uh, five more seconds. I promise you, if, if each and every one of you lived on Oak Street or Elm Street and lived it every day, you'd be up here, standing, just like I'm talking about.
Well, and the other thing we can do is, you know, sitting down with Rod, review our ordinances, and if there are, you know, we've done this before, we, we did this with, you know, protect the unprotected, because there were certain properties that, there were, there were certain places that didn't have any building standards. We can sit down and review them, and it, you know, we can make a recommendation that we want to change them, we can change the statute and we can enforce them, you know, and I, you know, I sit on the Rules and Law Committee, you know, I'm, I'm open to that, I'm open to having that discussion with you, you know, I, I care about that property. So, you know, I say, work within the lane we have. I don't think it's inappropriate to have a discussion, you know, with a bunch of interested parties, given the concerns of our citizenry. You know, other people may feel different here, but I'm just, I'm just telling you how I think.
I've been in those discussions with Randy a long time ago, and with Mayor.
Yeah.
A long time ago, about those expectations of the grounds and the whole nine yards.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Brad.
You know, can I say something?
You said, Brad, were those, those discussions you were in, were the expectations maintained?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely not. What I, what I'm thinking, Brad, is that, number one, I'm real proud of my council members, you're our council members, for knowing what the law is, and I think they hit it spot on about what the law is. And then what Marcy's saying, I tend to agree with, enforcement action in zoning cases and building code violation cases are generally driven by complaints, you know, I mean, we don't, you know, we do have a building commissioner, but he's not walking around the village each and every day looking for building code violations. We need the residents to say, hey, if the residents are pretty well schooled about what our laws and ordinances are relative to how you maintain property, that might be helpful to come in and say, hey, that place is looking like garbage right now, and that's got to be against the code.
But, but cite a specific ordinance or law.
Which would probably be okay, because then when we go to, to Waldorf and say, hey, you are not living up to the bargains that you made as, as residents of the village, and this is getting serious, we're going to have to take enforcement action, and as most of these council members know, a violation exists today, if it's not corrected today, it exists tomorrow, and tomorrow, and tomorrow, and all we can really do is find them, you don't have much more remedy than monetary, but at least it's a start to maybe get something done.
Well, but don't you think it's better to at least have a discussion first, before you go from, you know, you're, we're fining you?
Well, everyone who knows me knows, I always think that's the best way to go, and, yeah, but it's not incumbent upon the village right now to be the ones that generate those discussions, I don't think. If we owned the property or had some interest in it, maybe.
If we owned the property or had some interest in it, maybe, but, you know, I guess, I didn't know this, that I told, you know, I said to you, every time we kind of goose Waldorf a little bit, they step up and do what they're supposed to do. You say that I was mistaken on that, so I apologize for that.
And I think we're really going to discuss these two separate issues. We have the school, the church issue, and then we have just the maintenance and care of the grounds, which we do know, that they are using on a daily basis, in a way of using.
Right, right.
And I think that is what concerns us the most, is that they can't even maintain what we are giving them a free pass.
Understand.
So how do we expect them to then maintain the building that is the oldest building in the village?
Bill, could we ask, could you ask Ben to report any misuse or abuse of village property, so we can document that?
Well, I mean, Ben in his normal rounds, you know, as maintenance supervisor, I mean, he's constantly making observations, you know, about what is going on in the village, but I do think, I mean, I've got, you know, Brad, I've got Louise, these guys, I mean, they live there and, you know, they...
Do they, does everybody know clearly where the village property ends?
Oh, I think they know exactly where the village property is.
And to be honest, Brad, my husband, Louise, have been many of these people over there. My husband and Brad blow their leaves, they go over and trim their bushes. It is, it's really atrocious, it really is. You have to, as Brad said, you have to live it day in and day out, you really understand it.
Mary Beth, Mary Beth?
She needs to come, people don't want to come in here.
Mary Beth York, 6767 Worcester Pike. I was going to suggest that we elevate this to maybe a next level of conversation, which I've always been very curious about, and what are the legal parameters that have ever been given to Waldorf that we could stand on to pull some of what we've given to them for what period of time, indefinitely? What are the parameters? How long can they be enforced? And how do we reverse whatever's been written twenty years ago? Has anything been done with that? Because they have so much use of our public properties and they're not caring for them, we all agree to that, I think. So what can we do legally? Like, I think it's time to look at the legalities of them using our property, using our municipal parking lot for free. I mean, there's just, we've got to put a little pressure on this from a legal standpoint. I think that's where it has to go. I think we've done everything else that we can.
Well, it's a good point, Mary Beth, but I mean, in terms of, you know, are they legally allowed to use our property? I mean, any resident that owns property within the village of Merrymont can use our parks, of course, any person.
Not just as a resident.
That's true.
Well, I'm just asking, I mean, I know there's a contract at one point in time, and I don't know.
There's a contract for them to use around the building, there is not a written contract for Ann Button Becker Park. There was some emails and a verbal agreement. We looked, maybe a year ago, at what we could do as far as what we had to stand on as far as use of the parks. When we looked at our ordinance, it has to be pretty egregious for us to do anything. They've got to be taking down trees or things like that. So we really had no remedy for, because they're public parks, we really had no remedy of what we can do.
But public parks, if I went over and I erected, you know, a little encampment over at the bell tower, I'm sure that somebody's going to say, Mary Beth, you can't do that, it's a public park.
Well, no, we clearly, we do have specific, we do have specific ordinances against...
Whether or not.
Oh, he don't say that.
Try it out, we'll see.
They had, they had a email agreement, so to speak.
I'd be right there with you, Mary Beth.
To do Ann Button Becker. They had an agreement to do that.
Yeah, I'm just being very serious about it. I think that we could talk, and we've jumped through a lot of hoops with it, and I agree with what Louise has said, you've shared so many real things for so many years involving that situation around that area, dangerous, there's dangerous things.
Sure.
The wear and tear of our property. I will use an example to say that might be a little bit off, but I picked up a sign from Taste of Merrymont at the tot lot, and I wanted to take it over to the MPF building. And I found myself cutting across, going down the hill, over the bridge, and I felt like I was invading their territory. I didn't go on their hillside.
No.
I went between the backstop and that little rim.
That's all Merrymont property.
And they're like kicking the balls like crazy, and I mean, there's no respect. I obviously didn't belong with the school, and there was no respect for me walking through there, not even a hello, or can I help you, are you lost, or, you know what I mean? I think we have to rule it in from a legal standpoint, if we can, if there's a contract, we need to revisit it, we meet with them, I know that people have met with them, and that there may be agreements that never even happened. I don't get it, I don't, that's my type, I'm sorry.
And I know for a fact, because this happened when I was on council, there was at one point, a plan to restore the hill.
Yes.
And there was, you know, there was, there were drawings, there were supposed to be plantings, it was supposed to be a joint venture between the village and the Waldorf School. I don't know whatever happened with that.
Well, what happened with that is, like I said, plans were drawn up and a purchase slip or something in terms of, you know, the types of plants that were going to be bought, it was all sort of agreed upon, but when it came time to actually go and buy the plants, you know...
We never had, Bill, you and I were on that health and record.
Yeah, remember that?
Yeah, but there was no, I mean, they were interested in helping out, but we never, we never came back to close the deal.
Well, I know there was back and forth in terms of a drawing and a plan, and we talked about the plants and the placement and that kind of thing, there might even have been an estimate. All I'm basically saying is, it got that far and it fell off the radar. And I think it fell off because Waldorf, at that point in time, was not prepared to go ahead and buy the stuff.
I don't recall us ever really presenting an option about how to split it.
How, what it was going to be, well, it was something like that.
This is not the first, it won't be the last time when there is this discrepancy between a public need and a private need. How do elected bodies like us navigate that appropriately? What is, what's the best practice?
Well, you know...
Is it like in a public hearing, is it a resolution saying, you know, what is the best practice that you have seen as communities navigate these challenges?
Well, what I've seen mostly is, I think Marcia made a good point, discussion is always good, obviously, whether or not it's going to work in this case. I was not aware that Waldorf has been pretty deaf to what we've said in the past, you know, because if they are the type entity that's going to step up and do what they've got to do, then it's pretty easy to get something worked out. And I don't know, wouldn't even do any good at this point in time to say, hey, man, this time, we really mean business, because everybody's ticked off at you guys, you know. And I'm guessing, is this the truth, that what precipitated this conversation tonight is the fact that the church has given maintenance responsibility over to Waldorf? Waldorf, you're always pleased with the way the Emory Foundation maintained the church, but you're just concerned that Waldorf won't maintain the church like Emory did.
This is not the first time I've talked to you all about the Waldorf School and how they have been negligent. But with the new transaction that I heard, learned about, between Waldorf School and the chapel, that's just the edge, because I see, I, there is no evidence for us, those of us that live over there. I live right across the street from the church, and it is absolutely beautiful and meticulously maintained, it's gorgeous. I mean, like at night, you can't even believe we live there. And the fact that someone who can't, someone that can't even cut their grass on a tiny basis, that we, the Waldorf School...
Hey Jennifer, can I say something?
Sure.
I'm going, I'm going to say this, not as a member of village council, as a Matthew heir, I live at 3908 Pocahontas Avenue, I've lived there for thirty-eight years. For the last, going on twenty years, I've been, it's, sometimes it's been official and sometimes it's been the unofficial official caretaker of the chapel. And I supervise contractors that work there, I've supervised the grounds maintenance and all that stuff, and as you said, we keep it beautiful. I have a personal investment, and I agree with all the things that you said about the importance of that building and its importance in Merrymont, and you know that that's how I feel about it. And I'm very much looking forward to continuing to do the tours of the building with MPF and all that good stuff. But whoever this transition takes place with, those standards that we have for the building, whether it's the turf, the bushes, the landscape beds, the exterior of the building, the interior building, the maintenance of the HVAC system, the cleanliness, all that stuff, I've volunteered to continue to monitor that and report that directly to the Emory Memorial, and there's not going to be any slip in standards without them knowing about it and me documenting it and everything else. And if you ever have any questions, again, on a personal level, nothing to do with council, I'm happy to do that, and I'm always looking for volunteers to help me take care of the grounds, too, as a matter of fact. And I don't expect there to be, my expectation is there's going to be no change, you won't, you, as, the school building, separate matter, use of public parks, separate matter, but as far as that chapel goes, you should expect no change in how that looks. And it's going, if Waldorf takes care of it, I mean, it's going to be different, the way that we mow the grass over there is different, the way that we take care of our irrigation system, our shrubs, our everything, the interior of the building, it's a much higher standard, and that's going to be me... Can you guarantee that? Can I guarantee it? I can personally guarantee that I'll monitor it and get with the Emory Memorial if there's any slip-ups, yeah.
And I put that out there just so it's all back to the point of how important it is in that legal agreement that there are guidelines, those guidelines that Matt's talking about, if you're listening, man.
That's not up to me, but I can tell you, I can tell you, I have a very close relationship with the Emory Board, and they're, both their chair and their attorney, and they're counting on me to monitor things and make sure that this is successful. But that, again, that's, I'm speaking strictly as a volunteer resident who just likes, it's a, you know, it's a hobby thing.
Is the Emory Board aware of how the residents around the community feel about Waldorf?
I can't speak to that, I don't, I don't know. I mean, and it's easy to say, well, they're going to do better, and I know that credibility, it's hard to gain credibility when you've lost it, it's very difficult to get it back, get trust back. However, the director of the Waldorf School, instead of being the facilities director, he lives right over on Pleasant Street, across from Dogwood Park, he's very much aware of what the concerns are and what the standards need to be, and I think that's also going to be a big help in the process. So, only time will tell, but I'm optimistic.
I have one question.
Quickly, please, quickly.
I think part of the problem with it is a lack of respect in some ways. I don't know how many times that I'd be working over at the statuary area, and they'd be climbing on statues, and I would say, you're not supposed to be on that, get down off of it, the teacher was there, didn't do a thing about it. I finally, at one point, had my cell phone and I called the police chief, and they had to come over and say, get off of it. I've seen them climb up the back, the roof of the back of a boathouse down in the lagoon, and climb from that low area where the hillside goes down to it in the back. And they get up and they climb up on that, and some of the stone has come loose.
Yeah, no, we're aware, we, I know, Louise.
I think there's just a lack of respect for property, and what's theirs and what isn't theirs. And to just be able to go out and do everything. We lost numerous trees on the backside of the statuary, on that hillside, by their disruption using, building these things to hold water around the...
Okay, we...
I think we can wind it up.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, we have to sort of wind this up. Anyone who hasn't talked?
I think he has something else he wants to say.
Yes.
Good evening, guys, Marty Zach, fifty-five-year veteran of the village, third house in Merrymont, 3895 Oak Street. I'm the new kid on the block, I've only been there about six months. But I went to school there, Dale Park, I have my fourth grade teacher next door, who taught me about nature and things like that, ran through the same spots as Rob did many years ago. I was looking up here at the board and I see Art Davies and Mayor Straley, when I was a kid, Straley's grandkids moved away, I think his funeral was at the chapel. I know Art's was at the chapel, I went to his granddaughter's at the chapel, his daughters' at the chapel a couple of years ago. And, you know, it's kind of an emotional place, especially when, you know, I'm new to this neighborhood, I see people coming over, taking pictures of my house, painting my house, not painting my house, but painting a picture of my house, and people running tours, look at this house, and I'm like, well, hey, look at that church, that's beautiful, look at this park Louise takes care of across the street. I like to keep it that way, I'm the new kid, but I like to keep it that way. I love what you're saying, that sounds great. I do walk my dog through that property every day for the past six months. They didn't clean, Waldorf didn't maintain their property worth a lick, it was the same bushes that we ran through in the seventies, or maybe sixties, well, late sixties. Late sixties for you, nineteen seventy for me.
Yeah.
But...
More like the fifties or the forties.
No, 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 no. He was only a couple of years ahead of me. But, you know, they cleaned it up beautifully, they tore all those Texas bushes out, it looks fantastic. When I first moved in, I said, Brad, what's all the leaves in there? He goes, oh, don't worry about it, in the fall, you and I can go over there with our blowers with Daggerburg, and we can clean up their property. I was like, why are we doing that? We got a free building. And I was like, wait a minute, I got to clean up my yard, if my grass gets a foot high, some zoning guy might come by, Heinz, Chief Heinz might come on and say, cut the grass. These guys are, you know, very few of them are residents, I believe, and they probably need to keep a standard up. You know, I helped Louise for Memorial Day, we cleaned up the property around the church, and last time I jumped in the graveyard to chase a ball, I was, I don't know if it was you, or Cheryl Logan, said, get out of there, that's a sacred ground. When I see a Waldorf kid running in there, in there, just running around chasing each other, that's a sacred ground. And I know it's not, you can't do so much legally or whatever, but there should have been some sort of discussion, or, I know it's two private entities and all that kind of stuff. But that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Marty.
Anyone else?
I really, so is there not a process by which a council facilitates a conversation around these types of issues? Is that, I mean, what are the tools that typically a council...
There's nothing illegal about council facilitating a conversation amongst the people that care. I was really getting to issues, though, the concern for the church, I think Matt has given you pretty good assurances, if you will, that that's going to be okay for you in the future.
And then this...
I'm not, is this transaction closed already, where the contract, where they give up maintenance is, nobody knows. It's just a rumor that you heard. Okay. The thing about Waldorf, though, that does concern me, and if we're not doing what we're supposed to do to make sure those laws are enforced, then we got to step it up. And I know, that's probably not stuff you want to hear, Rod, or any of our building inspectors, or those guys, but, you know, if we're not doing what we're supposed to do to make sure they...
Or also if we need to adjust our codes.
Please.
Or also if we need to adjust our codes, because, you know, we have, you know, we have higher standards than, that we're set.
Mayor, may I?
Let Rod...
No, good. I was just going to bring it up later in the meeting, but I was going to ask where we are on the nuisance laws. And it's my understanding that we have to really get some new legislation and tighten that up on the books. I was thinking more of some of the properties, residents coming to complain, the property on Miami Bluff, there's a neighbor of mine that has things growing out of their gutters.
Bill?
You talking about me?
But I'm just saying, there's multiple...
Our general nuisance laws, yes, need potentially a little more teeth in them, because we have run up against this, where Rod and I will pay a visit to a resident to, basically, very friendly to suggest that they could tidy up a bit, you know, around the house, something like that, and normally, the first thing that they'll say to us, you know, what ordinance am I in violation of? And of course, we don't have a specific answer for that. So yes, we do need to talk about this.
Just a comment on the discussion, I mean, I don't know if it's about ordinances as much as just maybe not having a great strategy to deal with Waldorf still. So, I don't know, maybe we should use the change of head of the school as an opportunity to maybe, first, maybe collectively come up with what is our strategy, we want to work with them, and then second, then have a discussion with them. I do think we have lots of points of leverage between Ann Benton, Ben Button Becker Park,
Ann Becker.
The municipal parking lot. I think there's also an agreement in place when the school was sold about some agreements and who's responsible for maintaining areas of budding the park. So there's a lot of stuff out there, we just, I think the first... of stuff out there. We just, I think the first thing we need is, is sort of a strategy, and then reengage them, and then maybe provide regular community updates on status versus it. I think, looking at the code book and finding violations, I don't know if it's the great, best strategy right now, but.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree with that, too. The only reason, because I look at these cases all the time, the new cases that come out from the courts. I tell you, courts have really gone in the favor of protecting individual property owners' rights. And so these, these ordinances that we have, in the past, they've been challenged, because we were really strict, for example, on the sign ordinances that we had. And when they get challenged, all of a sudden, I start doing the research, and yeah, ours are much more strict than the courts will allow, you know? So if we start changing our statutes, just got to be careful that somebody's going to challenge them, and, and it may be found to infringe on private, property owners' rights.
Yes. I just, I just don't know who has the capacity to kind of take on individually, the single point of contact, to develop a strategy to how to work with Waldorf. But I think that's probably what's the next step, which includes both the legal aspects, research, as well as gathering community input, and then get those talking points together. Start it with either Dexter or Dexter's boss as a, as a means to start moving forward, and like I said, track, tracks, track stuff.
Sure.
I think that's right.
And I think that discussion, you know, starts with Marymont Preservation Foundation, because, you know, that's, in the historic district, they have vested interest in, you know, they're, you know, we're not, you know, they're not legally bound to the same things we are. But I do feel like somebody from councils should be invited to participate, or you. And, you know, and again, the, the objective is to have an open discussion and come up with an agreement that everybody can work with. You got to start there, you know?
Well, if I understand.
You owe it, we owe it to ourselves to try. And maybe, you know, I've heard you, and I understand, I've, I've listened to these various objections over the years, and I see your point. But I also feel like it's valid to give people the benefit of the doubt and start with trying to have a, a good discussion, and then go from there.
I still believe we need ordinances so that when Rod tells somebody, you're in violation of this ordinance. Because he, right now.
That's the taste to it.
Well.
But again, as, as Ed is saying, we have to be very careful in how those are crafted.
I, I agree. But if you tell someone you're against the ordinance, you're not citing them at that point. You're asking them to go off and do something. If somebody, you knock on their door, and they say, well, what ordinance? Well, you quoted ordinance. And maybe that will get them to take action.
All right.
Well, you might be right in the long run, but right now, that sort of flies in the face of what Marcia is suggesting. Talk it out. Rod's got a strategy, or at least he suggested a strategy.
But I'm talking about other properties in the village as well, Ed.
Say it again.
Other properties in the village.
I think Eileen had something else she wanted to say.
That are not in compliance with our ordinances?
Yeah. All right, we kind of need to move this along. Eileen, you had one other thing you wish to?
I don't think this will generate discussion, but it's related to everything we've been talking about. I wanted to kind of correct some misinformation that I became aware of at a recent public council committee meeting regarding our protection of parks and parks in the code. I became aware that there is some thinking that our village parks are not part of the historic district overlay, which is incorrect. I just want to simply make sure you all have the correct information, because it plays an important role in your decision-making. And so everything I'm going to share is directly from the code. I'll give you a copy, and I have the chapters and subchapters for everything.
Okay.
So basically, everything in the village is assigned to one of our six main districts. We've got residents A, B, C, D, industrial and business. And then the parks are assigned to residence A. That's their main district. But we also have four overlays. We've got the, which exist over top, or everything in the overlay district is already in one of the main six. The overlays are the historic district, parks, and the planned unit development, and zero lot lots. Those are our four. So while parks does have their own overlay district, they are also part of the historic district overlay. So it, so the way it's written in the historic district code, there's three pieces. There's the, there, oh, yeah, so we have landmarks as part of that. And the, in the landmarks, we have three areas. So landmarks aren't just buildings and structures and statues. So the landmarks are the main square, the Old Town Square, and parks. I just want to make that clear. Parks are part of historic district overlay. That's it.
Thank you, thank you.
Is it, is it relative to the Waldorf issues, and the bigger issue relative, about protecting and maintaining our public spaces and/or our properties? Is it appropriate, Ed, if it is in a committee, to do something like invite the new head of school to talk about? Is, is that within our lane?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
So if, if you're comfortable, we can, I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate to call it the Waldorf issue. I don't know if that is an appropriate call out, but that could go into rules and law, and we could arrange for that. What is the appropriate framework for that conversation?
Well, just, you, you can call it a, 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 a committee meeting to discuss safety policies and, and laws and regulations within the village.
Or policy to village-owned property.
Say it again, yeah.
To, you know, policy to discuss, you know, village-owned property. I mean, the parks are village-owned property. The hillside is. You know, the ball fields to the, to the, you know, right, as I'm looking this way.
So is that versus health and rec, or safety? I'm just, I just want to do this, you know, on the straight and narrow and in a publicly transparent way. If we want to reach out to the new head of school and have a conversation, that, and, you know, nothing can really be private unless, I guess we could do an executive meeting with him, him. What, what's the appropriate approach there?
You're saying to, for the mayor, the mayor can designate any issue he wants to a particular committee.
Yeah.
If somebody comes in with safety concerns, health and recreation concerns.
I think it's all three.
He can assign it. So what, are you saying that the issues raised today are both safety concerns and health and recreation concerns?
I mean, concerns about the protection of our park, some safety.
Or laws and ordinance.
And rules and law. Yeah, it was all three. So, and, and then the, the conversation about having an open dialogue with the new head of school, out of the gate, talking about the, what's the next steps here, educating ourselves on what are, what are the villages' if any rights? I mean, there's that step, too. So what is the appropriate next step here?
Well, it's.
If that conversation needs to happen.
If I'm sort of hearing you, it sounds as though you are somewhat volunteering here to take this into your committee, hold a meeting with Mr. Dexter, and, you know.
Is that a public meeting, and should that be a public meeting?
It should be a public, I, I would think. I mean.
Would we, would we do better, but, would, I'm, I'm.
Any committee meeting is a public meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm just, I don't want to make a missed step.
No, I, I think.
Trying to get some clear direction that also council.
Right. From a practical standpoint, I think that Rod's suggestion is probably a better one to proceed with first. Only for us to designate someone, the mayor, more likely than not, to deal with this new director of the Waldorf School, and say, hey, look at, these people are very angry, they're very serious. We're going to start amending our ordinances, unless you guys start toeing the line more, because you're not doing what you set out to do, what you agreed to do, what you promised to do over and over again. And if you continue to act this way, we are going to enact new ordinances that are going to require you to adhere to them more strictly.
But that would be a private meeting that I would basically.
That would be a private meeting, absolutely. And I think somebody suggested that, because it's a good time right now, because we have a new director of Waldorf School.
Right, right. And I do, I do know him.
I mean, I'd do it if you want me to. I don't know that director, but I'd be more than happy to do it.
We'll do it together.
Yeah.
Does Mayor, does he have that meeting?
Well, as I, as I said earlier, in, you know, in my ten years here, I mean, basically, and Bartlet and I actually had, Bartlet and I, Mr. Stelzer and I, I can't even go back to the number of other council people, that I have had meetings with, you know, an administrator at Waldorf recently, to essentially discuss what we are talking about here.
And if, if Waldorf still has the same.
Yeah.
You can't have this back and forth.
I got to get home.
Yeah.
I disagree. I want, I would like a next step laid out, even if it's a no step. I would like to be intentional.
Well, all right, well, how about this for a next step? I will contact Mr. Dexter. I will arrange a meeting. Maybe I'll do it with Rod.
Okay.
All right, well, with, I think Rod should probably be there.
Do one of the residents be part of that meeting?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Maybe not yet.
I don't think so.
Not yet, no.
But believe me, we've heard you all loud and clear today, so we will pass down your concerns. I was going to say.
And I, I think it would be appropriate to have, you know, written documentation that we have, and, you know, to bring up. I, you know, but I, I think that initially, we need to approach this as, we're trying to create a win-win. I don't want to start out in an adversarial way.
No, it'll be a, I don't, I'm not going to.
I mean, I'm not saying you're necessarily adversarial, but, but you're pissed off. You know, and I get it, I get it, I hear you. And I, and I understand that. I know, I know, I agree, I agree.
When can we come back to the meeting? When can we come back to council and see how things are going?
Well, how about this? I mean, how about I have the meeting with Mr. Dexter, and like I said.
I'm not sure if Dexter's the appropriate person to meet with.
Well, wasn't he the new administrator?
Well, I would, I would meet with the president of the school. I would, I would.
Well, all, all right.
I would say, Randy, I've been trying to say, I know their lawyer, at least the guy that used to be their lawyer, and I can at least initially contact him, see if he still represents Waldorf. Then we can set up a meeting with the appropriate person that can take some action.
All right, we'll make sure that we're talking to the right person. I thought it was going to be Dexter. Anyway, what I'm saying is.
So when will we hear?
Well, what, well, what I'm saying, let, let me have the meeting, let's see how well it goes, you know, kind of a thing. And then I'll report back to you in some way. Either we'll have another, you know, meeting, or I'll, I'll write it up.
Do this, do this. All right, anybody who has a concern, take a pencil, write your name and your email address. And when it's set up, we'll communicate with you that it's been set up. So we'll start with you, and that's, that's how we'll do it. Okay, I don't know if it's appropriate to send out on the, on the wide mail, but you are concerned. I don't know. So that's something you can say, this meeting has been set.
Will the meeting happen in a week or a month?
Oh.
Say thirty days. I mean, nothing gets done quick.
Well, we're on their schedule, too.
We want to, I would say as quickly as I can make it happen, as soon as I understand to Mr. York's point.
You just, you just a window, within two weeks, or within two.
Thirty days.
I'd say thirty days.
No, not a year. Let, let's say thirty days. Okay, thirty days. Okay?
Can you guys live with thirty days? Is that okay?
What's your option?
Yeah.
We've got a lot to get through, Bill. We need to move on.
Well, I mean, and things could change. I mean, there's two, like Jennifer pointed out, there's really two issues.
Okay.
So, you know.
We need to move on.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, look, we really, we're going to have to, we've got to move on. We've got, we've got a lot of ground to cover here yet.
Thank you for that resolution.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for expressing your concerns. You know, this is the kind of stuff I live for. I want to make things right.
Just the top one. Thank you. Probably up. Oh, perfect. Thank you.
We still got a lot to get through.
I know.
We've gone on some, haven't we?
Yeah, I know.
All right, look, I want to thank you all for coming in, but we are, we are now moving on, okay?
If you're not using my book, can I have it back?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's it called?
Okay.
Any other topics? No, there aren't any other topics.
That's my very expensive designer.
Let's get to ordinances and resolutions.
All right, come on, guys, guys, let's, let's call to order here. We're, we're moving on now.
All right, let's pay the bills.
Thank you.
Let's pay the bills. Any question regarding the bills?
No.
Should we just ask, make sure there's nobody else, no other issues?
He did.
Are there any other issues? Boy, boy, it better not be. No, no, I'm, I'm, you know, I got to have a little levity in here, don't we, at some point? Are there any other, Bill, do you have another issue you wish to, you've been very good sitting there, very quiet, patient. Okay, all right, I'm assuming then we are moving on.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Well, no, you declare as mayor, we are moving on.
Yeah, we are moving on.
Use the gavel if you have to.
He did.
I did gavel. Any question regarding the bills?
Yeah.
I just wanted to point out, just, so, on this is the fifty signs that were ordered. So just for future reference, because we're going to talk about this later in the meeting, the cost of those fifty aluminum signs was thirty-four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ten cents.
What line is that already? I don't even.
Under miscellaneous, about a little more than.
I'm assuming those are the aluminum signs that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Clean?
For Worcester.
Right, so that's.
Hey, so question related to that, Kelly? Since that's along Worcester, can we charge that to the state highway fund? We charge, you know.
We could, if there was funds available.
No, the state highway fund has funds.
Let's make sure we get the paving, that part of the Harvard pave is going to be charged to that fund. I just want to make sure we have enough money there.
Well, we'll look at that.
But, yeah, so if there's, if there's money left over, can we just charge it to that? Because it's so hard to find something to charge with that fund.
Right. I agree. I, I just want to make sure we got.
Yep.
Harvard done.
If we can, we will.
Thank you.
Good catch.
All right, is that it, Randy?
That's all I got.
All right, motion and a second to pay the bills.
Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlet.
Aye.
Ms. Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, let's pay some bills. All right, moving on to the committee report, I believe. Randy, I think you're up next.
All righty. The Health and Recreation Committee met on Tuesday, August nineteenth, at six p.m. in Council Chambers. President of the meeting were Health and Recreation Committee members Randy York and Matthew Ayer. Also in attendance were Mayor Brown, Village Engineer Chris Erdl, Fiscal Officer Kelly Rankin, Jim Getz, Doug Zemke, and Linda Bartlett and Kim Beach of the Marymont Racket Club. The purpose of the committee meeting was to, one, review pickleball expansion quote update, two, review tennis courts resurfacing quote, and three, review parks advisory board requests. The committee unanimously agreed to accept a bid from J.K. Muir for additional work required to execute the pickleball expansion. The additional work includes the removal of a tree stump and the relocation of a drain that was necessitated, necessitated by the lengthening of the courts. The mayor will instruct the maintenance department to remove the pine tree that is in the construction area before the scheduled beginning of the construction, on or about August twenty-sixth, which has already been done. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ben. The total quote from J.K. Muir for this is eight thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Number two, the accept the bid from tennis technology for the resurfacing of courts five, six, and seven. Court five will be one tennis court with pickleball lines. Court six will be four pickleball courts, and court seven will be tennis lines only. The, the bid includes the addition of a crack repair where necessary, and the replacement of the post on, post net court on, on court seven. Total cost of the bid is sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. One hundred and seven thousand one hundred and six forty-four dollars was raised by the pickleball campaign, along with the forty-four thousand dollars in village appropriations, will cover the total estimated cost of a hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-five cents for this project. The committee further recommends that the necessary legislation be prepared so that these contracts can be accepted and executed at the, at the August twenty-fifth village council meeting. The committee did not review the request from the park advisory board, as this request relates to the purchase and installation of landscaping at Livinggood Monument. A purchase order request for one thousand dollars was prepared and delivered to the mayor at the meeting. The meeting adjourned at six twenty p.m. Respectfully submitted, Randy York and Matthew Ayer.
All right. All right, you've heard the report. Any, any questions regarding the report?
Hey, Kelly, so, I sent you an email about this, I didn't get it. Can we use forty-nine, fund forty-nine oh four? Why not?
Because we have to, I'm going to make that line that we have the money in now in the general fund, a restricted line. In order to set up that fund, and this was an oversight on my part, Hamilton County has to approve the fund. They discourage you from just creating additional funds. So I've made that line, and that money that's in the fund now will get moved into that line that's specific in the general fund and restricted for this project. will get moved into that line that's specific in the general fund and restricted for this project.
So, so surplus is left over, because again, I want to make sure that the, they did a great job. They over, they overshot their target, and so I want to make sure that money does not get lost in the general fund.
It will not get lost.
All right, so the money that we have received from MSD, there's that forty thou, forty-eight hundred ninety-one dollars, is that in forty-nine oh four right now?
And it will get moved into the line that is four.
So, so how do you keep, but you're gonna have to keep track of the surplus cash, right? That's, that's what this is gonna happen.
That's kind of my job.
Pardon me, I'm sorry?
That's my job.
Okay, so, because the general fund has over two million dollars cash sitting in there. It's hard to keep track of that.
Says right on there, restricted for pickleball.
And anytime the school pays, you're gonna put it in that restricted line as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
But that, what it was intended for, right?
Yeah, sure, that was the idea.
That's where it will go.
Are this, are this restrict funds the school could be used for paying the resurface? Because that's why.
The maintenance, the agreement with the schools for the maintenance of tennis courts, right?
So it's gonna be, it's all gonna be part of that line, Bob. So, so she's gonna have a restricted line, I guess, within the general fund.
Can I ask, what is the legal definition in a municipal budget of what restricted is? Is that a legal definition?
It's, no, it's, it's our definition.
So we could unrestrict it if we wanted to? Okay, you can't do that kind of in the nonprofit sector, which is why I'm asking. That's a designation that you can't mess with. So that is not the case here.
Right, and so when the project is done.
Yeah. You can restrict it, but.
We move it back, we can.
Right, I mean, if there's some terrible crisis, you could unrestrict it if you needed to.
Through legislation.
Y'all would have to, y'all would have to vote it.
Yeah, we'd have to have legislation.
So the, the money coming from the, I just want to make sure we're not unnecessarily restricting dollars. So the, the money, do, do we have to restrict the money that comes into, from the contract for the tenant, like, the, right, the tennis courts, there's a, essentially, Marymount schools are paying a contract.
Right, yeah.
So are we required to restrict that money?
The agreement with them is to use that money.
Our agreement was to do that.
Okay, then you're contractually required to restrict that.
I'm just basing it on what I've heard from you guys, but the agreement with the school is to use that money.
That's fine, so it is, it is, so that, okay, so it is a requirement to restrict those dollars. That's, I just want to be clear.
That's our own requirement.
That is correct.
Oh, no, if we.
Well, that was their court requirement.
Yeah, if we send a contract.
Well, what I mean, it's our.
If we send a contract, that is a.
Correct.
I just want to make sure we are not restricting, it's not worth it to restrict dollars we don't have to restrict. That doesn't mean we don't designate them appropriately, but we are required to restrict that money. We, we need to.
To designate it for that purpose.
Clarification, yeah. If we are contractually required, we gotta do it, so, I, I got it.
Well, I mean, is there a written, there's an agreement between the school and MRC, right?
The whole spirit of that agreement was for long-term capital maintenance for the facility. It wasn't for operations. It was specific to the racket.
Like this.
Yeah.
Like this.
And that's why he's got it in there. If you flip on the backside, he's got.
Yeah, I did. My, my question is, are we gonna make sure we spend those two line items for this project?
Well, the other consideration is, the hundred and seven thousand dollars that was raised was for pickleball courts. It was not for resurfacing tennis courts. So it is not appropriate for us to use any of those funds for anything other than pickleball. The problem is, is when, when we appropriated the forty-four thousand dollars, that's way back when, when you could get three courts done for forty-four thousand dollars. It was, this one is sixty thousand dollars, so it's, it's about twenty thousand dollars a court now to do this. Way back when, it was less than fifteen thousand, so I made the mistake, we made the mistake of not asking for enough appropriations back when we asked for the forty-four thousand. Moving forward, and I said, Rob, today, our five-year projections, we want twenty thousand dollars a year.
Can I clarify something about sixty thousand dollars?
Sure.
The sixty thousand dollars from Tennis Tech.
You gotta come up to the mic.
Linda Bartlett, thirty-six eleven Moundway. It does include, where's my total? It's actually forty-six thousand for the painting and resurfacing, and the other twelve thousand is for pickleball nets and posts. So that's part of the Tennis Technology bid includes stuff specifically.
Where are you, the third line down? Oh, you're, are you looking at the sixty-eight three fifty-three?
No, I handwrote it on this other thing that Randy had.
Yeah.
It's, it's the fifty-eight three fifty-three. There's another, I don't know if Randy has it. There's another one where they call out.
I don't have all the detail in this.
Yeah, there's a, there was a second piece that they sent out. There were, it was two pages that came in their estimate, and there was that one, and then there was another one, and it laid out all the different things that made up that fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Could you send that to me, Linda? Do you have it?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Linda, then my question is, I, I mean, given, are we short or are we over?
No, we have more than we need.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're good. I mean, we're, okay, we've got this covered.
We have a surplus, but my point is that some of the, if there's extra from pickle that doesn't go to J.K. Muir, it can be applied to the total tenant, the Tennis Tech, because some of that is pickleball. Twelve thousand, twelve thousand of it is pickleball. I, just when you were saying, you know, you were saying sixty thousand was for resurfacing, and it's actually not.
Well, we, we would have resurfaced Court six anyway.
Right.
If we didn't convert.
I'm not talking about that. I'm just saying that of the fifty-eight, twelve thousand of that is actually for nets and posts.
Yeah, it's not broken out.
Pickleball.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll make sure you have a copy of that, and I'll send it to you.
Thank you, thank you.
So, I think the philosophical discussion we need, simply need to have is, if there's money left over, where does it go? I mean, that's really the only school we have now, because.
Well, I thought, I thought Linda just said it could go to tennis.
Well, I'm hoping that any money left over, including what comes from the school, that, that will continue to go into that restricted thing.
Okay.
So that if we have any surpluses year in year or after this project, it'll go in there, because we still have to buy wind screens. We want to do some security upgrades, I mean, we've got some other stuff that may be, and should be.
Yeah, on the horizon, coming up.
On the horizon.
Let me ask, when Randy, you say that the hundred and, hundred and seven thousand that was raised was just for the pickleball. But now we've got tennis in here, and it sounds like what Linda's saying is, is Tennis Technology, there is both pickleball and tennis in it. To what extent do we, I mean, if, if we need to break out different line items to ensure pickleball, that hundred and seven thousand is just on pickleball, then we'll create another line for that, but it sounds like we're kind of getting stuff mixed in together.
Yeah, well, no.
And how much of a concern is that?
I, I don't think it's that much of a concern. I, I think the, I think the, the concern is, if there's money left, it is the feeling of the Marymount Racket Club that if there's money left over, it should go into the restricted account, the forty, forty-nine.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what Linda just said, I think.
She's not gonna put it in the forty-nine oh four, it's gonna be in the general fund.
In the restricted line.
In the, yes, yes, yes.
Well, but there's gotta be, right? There's gotta be.
You're not allowed to call it a forty-nine.
Yeah, don't call it forty-nine.
We're being used, the county will let you.
Okay, okay.
But I, I do think if we can, we should use the monies from the schools up, because we are resurfacing.
But it's, it's all in the same pot.
Doesn't matter.
I understand.
Doesn't matter.
But I, I don't want to see if, this is a chance, much like you were talking about the state highway fund, to use it up, because we're not gonna resurface these courts for another three years or so, right?
Right, but then they're gonna, the school's gonna keep continuing, so.
I know that.
It's a, it's a pot of money that's gonna be used for the Tennis, Racket Sports Courts.
Yeah, Racket Sports, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
No, let's revisit it when we're getting closer to the end of the project.
Let's revisit it and go back through the numbers again, and if we need to make any adjustments, we can do it.
And I think, I think the only reason I brought it up, I philosophically wanted to get kind of a read from council if they agree with this logic or not, or, because I, I personally believe that since that money was raised for pickleball, and we're frankly using some of that pickleball money to do some resurfacing.
Yes.
If you look at it, I think that any residual should, since they raised it and since the donors wanted it put that way, I think that that oughta not get mixed in our general fund. It should go into a dedicated account.
Well, she's making it a restricted line.
A restricted line, a restricted line.
I don't think there's any disagreement.
All right, well, that's all.
For pickleball, tennis.
I think we're good.
It would just be for tennis, for racket sports.
Tennis.
So I.
For racket sports.
For anything under the jurisdiction of that.
It'll probably go to wind screens.
Okay, so philosophically, not a disagreement. I just need clarification again, are we taking what are technically unrestricted dollars and putting restriction on them?
These are, but this is.
By putting them in that fund?
No.
Okay.
Plus it's donations, it's not taxpayer money.
Okay.
But it was given for that purpose.
Exactly.
So you can't.
I totally understand that. Again, there, this is where my nonprofit accounting brain comes in, because you do not restrict dollars that you do not need to restrict. And so I just want to make sure, even though, I agree with you, that money should go, be spent on tennis courts, you don't want to slap a restricted label on funds that don't have a restricted label.
It's restricted for our purposes, right here.
Thank you.
All right, we've heard the report. Motion and a second to accept the report.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlet.
Aye.
Ms. Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Do these come off, Randy, or do they stay?
Done, done, done.
Thank you.
All right, Bob, you're up.
I would like the permission of council to, we had three agenda items. I'd like to go through the first agenda item, then open it up for discussion, so we don't get them all mishmash together. Is, am I allowed to do that? Any objections?
Mishmash.
Mishmash, I was taking a bath.
This is the minutes of the Public Works and Service Committee. Public Works and Service Committee met on August nineteenth at seven oh two p.m. In attendance, in, in attendance were the committee chairperson, Bob Van Stone, committee members Randy York and Rob Bartlett, Mayor Bill Brown, Supervisor Ben James, Village Engineer Chris Erdl, councilperson Marcy Lewis, and eight residents of Marymount. The first agenda was a discussion of new street signs for the village. Mayor Brown reviewed the presentation prepared by Ted Brown, which was initially prepared in March twenty-twenty-two and revised in both January twenty-twenty-three and August twenty-twenty-five. The Federal Highway Commission published the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD, which establishes a national standard for traffic devices, including signs for every street open to public travel in the United States. Section two D dot forty-three requires signs to be reflective to show the same shape and similar color both day and night. There are also requirements regarding the size and appearance of the lettering. There are some potential exceptions for historic districts. More on that later. Replacement options include aluminum brown signs, looking similar to the existing wood signs that meet and exceed MUTCD reflective and nighttime visibility requirements, and they'll last twelve to fifteen years and cost about sixty-five dollars a sign. Composite, not a natural wood product, brown signs looking similar to the existing wood signs, but does not meet the MUTCD requirements for reflectivity and nighttime visibility. Will not last as long as the aluminum sign and cost between a hundred and two hundred dollars per sign. Glass beads could be added to the background to meet the MUTCD requirements, but reduce the contrast between the background and letters at night. Wood signs, the exist, the existing signs. The lettering in the existing wood signs would be, could be made to be reflective, but reflective glass beads would be degraded with exposure to the weather, and the background does not meet MUTCD requirements for reflectivity and nighttime visibility. Will have a shorter life, similar to the existing wood signs. The application of glass beads would probably be slightly more successful on the composite relative to natural wood. The appearance and sustainability of the beaded composite and wood signs is not known. Supervisor James noted the existing wood signs are deteriorating quickly and were dropping off posts, which has accelerated with a large amount of rain and snow this year. As a result, Mr. James took the initiative to order aluminum signs, option one, for Worcester Pike, which are missing, which was missing a large number of signs. He felt this would be helpful to many, many village visitors who travel along Worcester Pike. Mr. James also noted the village has roughly two hundred to three hundred street signs. Mr. York questioned the number of street signs needed, citing a street sign survey completed in twenty-twenty-one that indicated there were approximately a hundred street signs in the village. Mr. James noted there would be a sufficient, there is, would be a significant cost in maintenance savings by using aluminum signs. That sign is the only full option, fully compliant with MUTCD requirements. There were multiple comments by the residents, that primary issues were, one, a change to the character of the village, excuse me, two, that the entire village may be exempt from MUTCD requirements due to its designation as a national historic landmark, and three, the poor visibility of existing signs, particularly at night. After a lengthy discussion, Mr. York moved to get a legal opinion about whether the village must comply with the MUTCD requirements due to the National Historical Landmark designation, and that the village, and that the village placed the information's various sign options on its website in order to get opinions from those not at the meeting. There will need to be an evaluation of the number of signs, as, so an appropriate cost can be determined. The motion passed unanimously. Mr. York recommended there should be a courtesy guidance from the ARB and historic preservation organizations, such as MPF, concerning the design of street signs. It was noted by both Mr. Brown and Mr. Van Stone that the ARB does not have jurisdiction over travel, for traffic devices, including street signs. Mr. Van Stone moved that the service department install the already purchased aluminum signs along Worcester Pike, and replace wooden posts where necessary with previously purchased wooden posts as a test. The motion passed unanimously. To be clear, the Public Works Committee does not recommend or endorse any street sign option at this point in time. Only street signs that the village already owns will be installed. That ended the part about the street signs.
Bob, I thought, I thought when we were gathering input, we, because it says up here in number two that if there's glass beads that are in the background and in the lettering for the composite, for the composite, it says here it would meet the MUTCD requirements, right?
It, but then you don't have the contrast. I, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Wait, it says would not. Is that your question?
What's your question, Rob?
No, no, it, it, so, in point two, bullet point two about the composite, it says glass beads could be added to the background to meet the MUTCD requirements, but it would reduce the contrast between the background and the letters at night.
Right.
And I think that violates the spirit of the requirements, that you have a clear, I think it could be done. We'd have to try it out.
I think we have to try it, that's the thing. I think we should try it, at least to see.
Once again, I think a large, this is my personal opinion, a large part of this is economic. And the fact that, and Ben has put up some of the signs along Worcester, and I've heard good things, I've heard bad things. So I'm just saying, you know, I think, number one, we need to get that legal opinion, okay? So we, do we have to obey these? My personal feeling is that may be within the historic, this is my, I'm not a lawyer, we only have one here. What, but, you know, we have other rules for the historic district, where if you live in a residence outside of that, you don't have to do that. When I re, got new windows and siding on my house, I didn't have to go to the ARB, because I don't live in the historic district. So suddenly to say, oh, the whole village has a historic district, and therefore we don't need to do this, we just need a legal opinion.
Okay.
I'm wondering, in order, with deference to time, I'm not really sure that we need to reopen in the entirety of this debate until we actually have a legal opinion.
Sure.
That would be my suggestion.
I just find it conflicting when I read the two.
So do you want to table this, then?
No, no, I don't want to.
Because I will tell you, I have a big, big problem with how this was done.
What do you mean?
We put up signs, then we had a meeting. It was never any budgets, ever, never on anybody's party list, and it showed up in Bob's committee report tonight. That's not good governance. That's not how we do things.
Randy, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to bring this up, because you have asked me now a couple of times, how did we get here? How did this happen?
How did we get here?
Yes. Well, I'll tell you how we got here. And that is, you know, Ben had been talking about doing something about the street signs for quite a time, and he had brought me into the conversation. He knew that you had done, you know, your survey.
Sure, I want him fixed, too.
Ben James called me up about a month ago and said that the two of you had a conversation regarding the street signs. He shows you the existing, he shows you the aluminum sign that was being proposed, and basically you said, "Looks good to me." And then he relayed the information to me, saying, "Bill, I think we should proceed with ordering some of these signs."
So I have the authority, based upon the conversation, to make those kinds of decisions for the village?
No, I made the final decision to go ahead and order them, but I did so basically that you had essentially endorsed the sign.
But it's under your funding limit.
I would have assumed we would have had a public meeting and get input from people. I don't mind this. I will tell you, this is not about how I feel about the signs. This is about how I feel about the process.
Let me just make a clarifying comment. Before the meeting, Ben had put up three signs, to the best of my knowledge. One down on Belmont and Homewood, one at Harvard, and one at Pleasant, all along Worcester.
You know, there's one maybe at Plainville.
Well, before the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and, but we had purchased $3,500 worth of signs. We owned them.
Yeah.
And I don't think you can send a Worcester Pike sign back.
You're right. The question was at the meeting, and the reason I made that motion, was because we had the signs, let's get them up. I think, looking at it at the meeting, in a room with lights from the ceiling, I think the signs look much better on the posts than they do just looking at them in a room like this. But that's, but, so having them up, people could see what they look like. If we say, "We're going back to wood signs," they can be taken, there's nothing permanent about signs. They can be taken down. And so I think what we have is a test to see what they look like, and I would, it'd be my recommendation to approve this report. We haven't selected a sign. It says very clearly in the report, we haven't.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Sure.
I agree with everybody. And the reason I say that, the reason I say that is, the process wasn't perfect, and we're not perfect. Ben took tremendous initiative to get different signs and try different things and show them to people, and we encourage initiative from our employees and from our service department to maintain our village and to get something good. So, yeah, the process wasn't perfect, we should have, it would have been best to go through committee, and Ben did a fantastic job of taking the initiative to put something together. So, you know, I'm with Bob, we've got the signs up, I'm with Randy, let's put a survey out, hey, what do you think about the new signs? And we're good to go.
I couldn't have said it better myself, Matt, as I was sitting here listening.
I think first things first, though, I've already informed him about what I need in terms of a legal opinion.
Right.
I'd like to do that first.
Right.
Let's get that out there.
And that's the recommendation.
Potentially there being a survey.
Yeah, but I just, I do want to say that, you know, Ted Brown is a lawyer. I mean, I don't think he would make frivolous recommendations, you know, I think he...
He was merely reading the uniform code of traffic.
I think he did his due diligence.
Yeah.
And, you know...
Admittedly, we have some differing opinions in here as to how strictly we must adhere to this.
Can you say categorically that law applies to municipalities on the National Historic Register? Do we know that?
Randy, that's why we're getting a legal opinion.
Well, you're saying here that we've already done it.
No, 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 it's not, Randy. That's one of the, so I was just underlining here. So, Bob, if you mind, this says that what we voted unanimously to approve, village gets a legal opinion on whether the MUTCD applies to us because of the national historic landmark. The village placed the information about the sign options on its website to get opinions. And then we also need to create an evaluation of the number of signs, so we know an accurate cost. And then the fourth thing is, as Bob proposed, we unanimously approved, the ones, let's put a few test ones out there on the streets, so that people can see. So those are the four things, that's all we've approved.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
I just don't want to get to the point to where we're six months from, eight and a month from now, it says, "Oh, we're pot committed, because we spent $3,500."
No.
No, no.
That's all I wanted, thank you.
But I do also think it's an important consideration, I mean, it's important to get the legal opinion and find that out, and I would think, based on my layperson's knowledge, that you don't have to replace signs, but as they wear out, you are probably obligated to replace them with signs that are compliant. But I do also think it's worth considering a question of safety and liability.
Again, Marcy, if I could just please, like I said, that should be part of the debate, but let's not, let's not get ahead of ourselves.
Okay.
Let me get with Ed, I've already informed him by email what I want, what I expect. Let me pursue that legal opinion first, and then we'll argue out, you know, legalities and safety and...
I just really wanted the meeting to last for another hour.
What I want us to do...
We're on track.
We'll go on to the next...
You're buying the cocktails, Marcy.
We'll go on to the next thing, but the four points...
Did you want to pass that part of the report?
Yeah, let's do that. Want to pass it?
My move, we pass that part of it.
Yep.
Well, I'll read the, I'm hoping to pass the whole thing.
Okay.
Okay, good. Let's read the rest of it.
So that part passed the hurdle.
Yep.
We're okay with that. So let's read the rest and just do it.
And then, we've got a lot of stuff left.
Yes, we do.
The second item was repaving municipal parking lot along Chestnut Street. Mr. Van Stone noted that the next two years of properties on both ends of the parking lot will be controlled by the Waldorf School, and questioned if the appropriated $65,000 could be spent in a better way. Mr. York pointed out that the council approved the expenditure in both 2024 and 2025, and it had a relatively high ranking on the August 2024 priority list. He moved that the village engineer get an estimate for the paving contractor approved for repaving selected village streets later this year. The engineer should also work with the contractor about paint stripping. This motion passed unanimously. As usual, we have more discussion. It would suggest the village engineer could find someone to design the optional layout for the parking lot, depending on the bid and available funding. The paving contractor may not be the best source for striping, particularly if a safe drive-through to drop off and pick up students at the Waldorf School is required.
Well, I just wanted to comment on that last paragraph. So, what I said in the meeting was, we have three interests in this parking lot. We have, it's our municipal, first off, it's our lot. So we have the residents that live there and the businesses adjacent to it. They'll want to design some this way. You have the operating chapel that would want it somewhere this way, and you have Waldorf that would have it this way. Clearly, we can optimize parking spaces out there if we do not put a drop off in. So we have to decide what is our optimal layout. And I don't think I ever suggested that it be that we include a drop off. We have to decide what's the optimal layout that we want for our parking lot to serve our residents.
Well, Ray, I thought, to your point, that's a good, very good point. I thought that we sort of discussed and had agreed that we were going to have, was it choice?
No, we just want to get a quote, we want to figure out what it costs.
To basically design what that would be.
Are we giving them guidance on what to put in? We need to give them guidance.
Yeah, whether there's a drop off or not.
So is it a drop off? Is it not a drop off? Is it maximizing parking spaces? What is our, what is our goal?
I thought choice one was brought up, but I don't think we charged Chris with contacting him.
No, I agree, I agree, I agree with you.
Yeah, correct.
I'm happy, I'm happy to contact him, just to get an initial quote, just so we have an idea of what it costs. So you bring up a really good point, though, too, Randy. And I don't know if we want to decide it here or what, but we need to know whether the design includes a drop off or not.
Or if they paid for half the lot, they could get their drop off.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should tell the designer, basically, to sort of design it a couple of different ways.
Yeah, they did.
I have already. But now, if you want it designed the way we want, or do you want it designed the way...
I thought we already had a conversation with them.
So the thing is, I've heard before, when we don't have a drop off, traffic is even worse there.
Yes.
So I don't think you want to go without a drop off, because mornings and evenings, traffic will be even more backed up on that street than it already is.
Yeah, if I could add that, I can't remember how many years Waldorf's been there, but the building was new to them, and the dynamics and the physics of the geography of the streets and everything, that was all new to them, and it's, so it took a little while to work things out. But they, their procedure now, because I'm there in the afternoon, and fairly frequently, and I actually observe it, they have, it's very efficient, and it's very safe. And Chief Hines will state that as well, he has worked with them and observed that, and they've switched from having everybody show up at the same time to having two different start times, so that it keeps things moving smoothly. And so, for safety of kids, whether they're public schools, private schools, whatever, they're kids, I think the drop off zone would be imperative, because it's a safety thing.
So they do go into the lot.
They go in the lot, yeah.
And it's interesting, too, originally, before they actually were doing that, the, some of the teachers and maybe administrator, they tried to sort of set up their own makeshift drop off in front of the building on the street.
Yeah.
And that, you know, that didn't work.
Yeah.
And then they switched through the lot.
So if we want to, if we do want to accommodate a drop off, which I'm agreeable to, I think we all are, we can still optimize the parking. Do you move it further south, so it's right there?
Yeah, that's where the engineer comes in, who also knows about the safety aspects, right? Because the safety's number one.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bill, are you then going to authorize Chris to contact choice one?
Well, would you...
Go ahead, Rod.
Yeah, but shouldn't it stay with Chris? I mean, not to, no disrespect intended.
Well, he wasn't, we didn't bring up the person's name in the meeting. I got that from you.
Go, Rod.
Are you volunteering?
No, I, I mean, the question earlier about how to have leverage with Waldorf, as we talked through the number of issues that were presented, can we wait on redesigning the parking lot until we start some discussions?
Does it hurt to get a quote to what it costs?
No.
I think it just wasted effort, because we really don't know what, honestly, if you ask me, I wouldn't know what Waldorf would say is important to them. We could then turn and say that, you know, we could do that, but we need these kinds of things, but it's part of a discussion, so.
Part of the strategy.
I would think it would be part of the strategy is...
It's my understanding that those conversations were had with them over the last couple of years, and no results.
I'm not privy to it, I don't know.
The meeting I had had nothing to do with the traffic flow through the parking lot. It was strictly, how much are you willing to pay because your teachers use it? I did the math, they use it like 75% of the time. And the point is that they said, they signed a legal agreement.
I, my memory is that I thought we were just going to ask Chris to get an updated quote, how much it costs to do the lot.
That's all that's in here.
Yeah.
Okay, but then, again, it does talk about...
But then the traffic, the engineer study that was on top of it.
Yeah, yeah, just to get a quote. All we're doing is, what's it cost?
Okay, just to get a quote.
It was just to get a quote.
Let's go.
Yeah.
Nothing?
I'm going to say, I do think that Rod is correct, and I think we should put this on pause.
I agree.
I would, I would say the exact opposite, only because we've met with them multiple times, and they're, and, I mean, they have a 100-year-old building to take care of, and behind, and...
They signed up for that.
Yes, they did, but they made it clear that they'd be willing to put $2,000 or $3,000 toward the lot, and above that, they want, and if we don't pave the lot, we don't pave the lot. And that's, that's their position, you know, if we don't pave it, we don't pave it. And it's, I mean, it sits next to, we've just been talking about tonight, that it sits next to the gem of the village, the chapel, and it's in part of Old Town. We don't take care of Old Town to the extent that we should already, and I think we should, it's a municipal lot, it's for use by residents, it wasn't, we know it wasn't constructed the way a parking lot should have been constructed, the reason it's in such terrible shape, it's got no underlayment to it. I think we ought to pave it, stripe it, and be done with it. We've got the money and we've appropriated it.
Actually, I agree with Susan and Rod.
Because we don't know what the new bid would be.
Okay.
Can I just finish my point?
I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, they have money to enter into agreement with the church. That's a, that's a financial undertaking.
You don't know that.
Oh, okay, what, it's free?
You don't know what the terms are. It's none of our business.
Well, I think that was part of Rod's point. But, look, I think, why don't we just back up here a second?
I disagree.
Get the quote.
Get the bids in.
Just before we decide what we're doing.
I'm sorry, I wasn't saying to, don't get a simple quote. I was just saying, don't redesign the parking lot yet until you understand all the needs.
Totally agree, totally agree with that.
Everybody agrees with that.
Just trying to get a quote for what it costs.
We're getting, what we, what this report says, we're going to get a quote for the paving, and we can hold off on the striping, like we hold off on other things.
Let's get Jonell.
Is there a third thing in your report?
No.
Yes.
Oh, God.
The third agenda is the repair of municipal sidewalks, those along village parks and buildings. Mr. Van Stone has inspected and measured all the sidewalks. A total of 304 squares had some sort of deficiency, cracked, tilted, or spalled. 104 squares had tilts smaller than a half an inch, which according to zoning, the zoning officer, is allowed by ADA requirements. The following table lists the remaining squares needing maintenance and the total cost, based on some estimates from the zoning officers.
Do we need to go through that whole thing? Just asking everyone if we need to actually go through all those numbers.
Have you, my only point, the crack, no tilt, we may just decide to put off, because that means there's no displacement, they're cracked, but there's no, nothing is a trip hazard.
Can you define the term spalled?
Spalled is where the finish of the concrete, you're starting to see the aggregate, the top surface.
Okay, thank you.
The two most egregious of those are right around on Plainville, right around the tennis courts, there's two or three in a row there. I recommended the village attempt from all the grinding, using the $5,000 already appropriated in the 2025 capital improvement budget for sidewalks. And the committee works a final plan based on 2026 appropriations. The committee agreed unanimously. Mr. Van Stone worked with the village engineer to get estimates from a grinding contractor. The meeting was adjourned at 8:35. Any comments on the sidewalks?
Good job.
Good work.
Very thorough.
Get the bad stuff done first.
Well, some of the bad stuff is the work in the high, high priority, where they have some pretty big offsets. But once again, the total there was $11,000, and rather than do a couple of those, when we get a contractor, and let's do as much as we can with one type of contractor.
It's a good start.
Okay, we're all good with the sidewalk, we're all good. Motion, and you've heard the report, motion and second to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
What comes off, what stays on? Is it all sand? Are you leaving everything on? Okay. Thank you.
All right, quickly and miscellaneous, village offices will be closed Monday, September 1st, observed since Labor Day. I know Randy's kind of covered this, but I want to just go ahead and, I think we had a fabulous taste, I think everybody involved with that did a great job. I can't tell you how much I like the new location, and just about to a person, every person I talk to love that location. We're going to have it there again next year. We're gonna have it there again next year. You know, it was a really good turnout, really good organization. I unfortunately somehow always get stuck behind the cotton candy machine, so I didn't get to sample any of the other flavors.
But you got diabetes.
But I understand, they were all good.
So, how, so you heard people say they wanted to have it there again, or it's already been decided?
No, it has not been decided. They were just saying how much they liked it, and that we should have it there again.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if I heard you correctly.
Yeah, yeah.
I talked to Biff Black today, and he, he agreed with that comment, but he said they'll be up for the MPF to decide.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be decided as we, Mary Beth, you want to say?
No, thank you for the support of the village on the event. And I did not share it this year, it was my first time in 11 years, but Nancy-
Nancy, she did a fabulous job, yeah.
She did a great job.
Yeah, she did a really good job.
You will always do the cotton candy machine.
Yeah.
So you die of diabetes?
Yeah, I go home, I go home with a sugar coat all over me.
But the food vendor appreciated in here. I had several of the food vendors talk to me directly on it, and I really liked the coffee option. Enjoy having the food vendors straight at the location.
I think it was nice to have the Dora option. And I wanted to sign up for cotton candy, but I'm not tall enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do some resolutions, please.
I got thwarted.
No, we still have resolutions on-
And we're done, Randy, we're not done yet, buddy. Okay, look, look, one, one quick thing in passing, I have to mention it here publicly. My son Ted, who was entirely responsible for the traffic setup, the diversion of the traffic, I mean, I helped him a teeny bit, but I gotta mention Ted Brown, he did a fabulous job setting it all up, and even though I had to take it all down myself.
Yeah, Ted.
He also did the setup for the day before for the coast.
He did do that, yeah, yeah. Well, he'll be doing it for the Kiwanis thing, which is coming up soon.
So Mayor, can, can we have, I don't want to be off topic.
But you are.
Ben put up some dirt in that-
Yeah, no, I'm already on top of that, yes, we need to, the, the trenches where I, I did some of the electric work are, are beginning to settle, and yes, we're gonna add some dirt there, because there were some, like, nearly trip hazards there, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you think we could order some wood?
Bill? Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. This is the third reading. A resolution implementing sections 37, 35.65 through 37, 35.70 of the Ohio Revised Code to expand the boundaries of community reinvestment area in the village of Marymont, Ohio.
Okay, that's the third reading, a motion and a second to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
This is the second reading, to amend section 51.17 of the Marymont Code of Ordinances to increase fees collected for garbage and refuse pickup.
Everybody clear on what this is? Okay, we'll have the third reading, next-
The Bartlett tax.
Next.
Okay, this is the first reading, to accept bid of J.K. Muir for, to relocate basin and remove tree trunk, tree stump as part of the pickleball court construction project at Mary Emory Park, to authorize contract and to declare emergency.
All right, I need a motion, and we've had the first reading, I need a motion and a second, suspend the rules and allow for the second, third reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
May we have the second reading?
To accept bid of J.K. Muir for to relocate basin and remove tree stump as part of the pickleball court construction project at Mary Emory Park, to authorize contract and to declare emergency.
Okay, everybody clear what this is? Okay, motion and second to adopt.
Move to the third reading. Third reading.
I'm sorry, third reading.
To accept bid of J.K. Muir for to relocate basin and remove tree stump as part of the pickleball court construction project at Mary Emory Park, to authorize contract and to declare emergency.
All right, now, motion and second to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mr. Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
We need a motion and second for the emergency, please.
Well, it's getting late.
Yes, it is.
Motion and second to evoke the emergency clause, please.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Is that the emergency clause to end the meeting ASAP?
No, it's just on this.
I couldn't resist a wisecrack.
All right.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, sorry about that.
Okay, this is the first reading, to accept bid of Tennis Technology Incorporated for the repair, resurfacing, and painting of tennis courts five, six, and seven, to authorize contract and to declare emergency.
All right, a motion and a second to suspend the rules and allow for the second and third reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
This is Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
May we have the second reading, please?
To accept bid of Tennis Technology Incorporated for the repair, resurfacing, and painting of tennis courts five, six, and seven, to authorize contract and to declare emergency.
All right, everybody knows what this is, correct? Any questions? No? May we have the third reading?
To accept bid of Tennis Technology Incorporated for the repair, resurfacing, and painting of tennis courts five, six, and seven, to authorize contract and to declare emergency.
All right, a motion and a second to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mr. Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
All right, a motion and a second to evoke the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
One more.
Okay, this is the first reading, to supplement ordinance number 0725, annual appropriation ordinance, and to declare emergency.
All right, you had the first reading, a motion and a second to suspend the rules and allow for the second, third reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mr. Brown Knight.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Van Stone.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
May we have the second reading, please?
To supplement ordinance number 0725, annual appropriation ordinance, and to declare emergency.